Welcome. We're going to call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM sharp. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, and it looks like for adjustments, we want to move Item O, staff nominations, forward to be heard following Item I, directors' reports. So I'll make a motion to make that change. Do I have a second? Second from Mr. Rue. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Mr. Mabes, how do you vote?
I'm okay with that.
Thank you, sir. Uh, sure, me.
Zoom on our screen?
I don't know if it is, actually. Okay, we'll discuss. Thanks, Sarah.
Jonathan's on here somewhere. Oh, there you are.
But I think it'll jump back and forth, right? So probably for the most part, Mr. Mabes will just lurk in the background.
We will.
I'm just looking to see if he's gonna make funny faces or what he's doing over there.
We will have a couple of reports tonight from people via Zoom.
Gotcha, yeah. Okay, so we're moving O up to after I. O, okay. Noted, so I don't mess up. Okay, yeah, yeah. Approval of minutes, I see none. Public comments, do we have anybody present that would like to make a public comment? Yes. Come on up, what do we have for, yeah, the mic right over there, right? Right at the podium? Yeah, is that live, Sarah, already, or?
Might not be able to see me back.
Yeah, well. Yeah, you just let us know who you are and then have at it. Yeah, the mic's right there, so just try to get into that. Maybe I bend it down. There we go.
Is that better?
Perfect.
Hear me? Okay. Hello, my name is Leah Pelletier. I have three children, two in Sanford schools. I homeschooled last year due to the mask mandate. My children want to be in school and they deserve a healthy, appropriate education within our schools. As these first two weeks have unfolded, I have been paying attention to any differences in either of my children, whether the good or worse. So far, my fourth grader has expressed the added stress the mask rules introduce. At nine years old, having to worry about the consequences put in place for each no-mask offense. If I take my mask down for a breather, there will be a consequence, and then another one to follow, and another to follow that. Now, if you have kids who like to follow the rules, as I do, I don't know why, but they do, this becomes an issue. There's a lot of added pressure put on the shoulders of our youngest community members. So far, my fourth grader has come home with the knowledge of his teacher's vaccination status, and according to her, that we are all having mask mandates due to some people not taking the vax. This is what my fourth grader came home with just this past week, two weeks into school. How is this a healthy, appropriate education? It's not. My seven-year-old in second grade is also showing signs of increased anxiety, crying after I put her to bed at night, only on school nights, and this has never happened before COVID or before school started. And no other changes have happened in our family life, so I break it down to, what's the only difference happening here? Is she staying up at night worried about these mask rules, that if I take my mask down, this is what's gonna happen? And what else can I equate this to? There's no other changes in our life. We must pay attention to these signs of anxiety in our children. Why is their mental health not of importance? Furthermore, we have been told that there will be adequate mask breaks, especially while our main weather allows it. So far, my two children have had three to four gym classes, and each of them have had one gym class held outside. Now, at Pride School, they have a wonderful field behind now. They have Willard fenced-in playground there, next, right next door, parking lot, walking distance. They're not using those. You'd think this would be a perfect opportunity to get outside through the day. Gym class is not getting outside. I actually spoke with Mrs. Inman one day last week, and on the one day that I spoke with her, they were outside for gym class. Before then, no. Since then, no, including today, not outside. So mask breaks during the day are not happening in all of the classrooms. I speak to my kids after school each day. I ask them the questions, and it's incredibly defeating to be told that they went outside once today, 20 minutes before lunch. Second graders. So how do I explain to them that, why we're being lied to? Why were we told by your teachers that there would be adequate mask breaks, and that's not happening? We need to begin by making baby steps. Baby steps toward being able to lower your mask if you're having a hard time. Because let's be real, these kids are human. We all have a hard time, and we should be allowed a little bit of grace here. There's no grace happening, and I only can speak for the elementary school, and there's no grace happening with these kids and these masks. And if they are not, and if they have the consequence, the consequence is to go to the principal, to have detention. And I'm speaking for second and fourth graders. To go to the principal, have detention, or worse, your teacher threatening to tape your mask on your face in front of the whole class, which, yes, this has happened in my son's fourth-grade classroom already this year. So what are we teaching our youth, our future, to sit down, shut up, keep your mask on, or else? There will be consequences if you don't keep that mask on. So the pressure that we're putting on some of our kids' shoulders, what are we teaching them? For a mask that we don't even know if it really works to prevent the spread of COVID-19 itself. Because we're still seeing cases, and we will continue to see cases because it is a virus. A virus that statistically does not affect our children. And at what point do we assess, are these mask mandates doing more harm than good to some of our children? I realize that some children do just fine with them. I realize that, and that's wonderful. But that's not true across the board, and we have to recognize that there are significant differences in our children and their abilities to learn with these obstacles. For families who want the masks, they have options. Store-bought mask, homemade mask, double masking, mask with a face shield, N95 mask. There's lots of options. Where are the options for children who are suffering in other ways? Thank you.
Okay, Leah, thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else that came in that wants to talk? I'll set, Beth, do we have anybody on Zoom? Nobody on Zoom? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to communications. We have been continuing to see a stream of emails come in, mostly on the mask mandate. We've got Mallory Mercer, who is in favor of a mask choice in the school district. Rhea McCoy, who, I'm trying to think what Rhea had said. Yep, yeah, she was in favor of masks. Meg Hickey is from Acton, has a number of kids, and is anti-mask, I believe. Yeah, please remove the mask mandate. We've got Mallory Coralides. I hope I didn't mask her the last name, too bad. And it looks like Mallory is looking for a mask choice, I believe. Then we've got Christine Morrison, who is also looking for a choice. And Heidi Flint. Was actually just questioning about drinking water in the classroom, which actually, we had another email today that came in from Diane Honig asking about some inconsistency with that. So those are a few that came into the school info. I know we've seen a few, too. I've been trying to make sure I respond back to everybody, so they're aware that we have gotten the emails. And then, do we have any other communications, Mr. Nelson? Okay. So that's that. So now we're up to committee reports. Mr. Nelson, construction projects. Oh, sorry.
There was just another, I also kept record of it. There was also another one from Jillian Newahan, making a big thank you to Sanford Middle School for, they're new to Sanford, and appreciated the welcomeness that they were given.
Thank you for pointing that out, Amy, because that was a really nice one, so. Okay, committee reports?
Actually, there was one more, sorry.
One more, okay.
Just, just so you know, I'm only passing on the ones that go to the school info line to be able to share information here in terms of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go right ahead, Amy, what else did you have?
I didn't understand what that meant, but Jessica Warner had wanted us to look at a Spartan logo as well that she has created.
Yes, yeah, and I responded back to all of them, and thanks for the email. Oh, Matt was just saying, because we have a schoolinfo@sanford.org email address, so that doesn't come to us necessarily, so that goes to Matt. So that's why Matt was making sure. He usually forwards them to us, but then other people have contacted us directly as well, so. The information is flowing, I guess is the bottom line for that, for anybody watching at home. Okay, Matt? Oh, no, go right ahead.
If you want emails to be read, they need to go to the Sanford Info.
Okay, so, so people at home can know what you're asking, Tammy? So in the audience, she was just saying if we wanted the emails read during the meeting, they should go to the school info. Essentially, in the past, like, we really haven't, like, read every email that comes into us. I'm just trying to make the point of kind of letting everybody know that we're getting their emails, so they know that we're seeing the information, so all of the school committee members have seen it.
Everybody on the school, Sanford, they're in Sanford, Info email?
No, that's what I was just saying, the schoolinfo@sanford.org. We started that up at the beginning of this whole COVID thing, just to kind of make sure people had, like, a central place to send it to. Those will go to Superintendent Nelson, and he will usually forward them to us. I think maybe these had just come in, so we hadn't had a chance, so we just wanted to let everybody know that they have been seen and distributed, so. But you can also always email the individual school committee members if you go to the sanford.org website and go to school committee. We're all listed there with our school, our email addresses, so, very accessible.
And I just, I'd like to add, too, that if there is a concern that someone does have, ask that people take that concern up with the involved individuals. So if that is a concern with a teacher, we ask that you please start with that teacher. If there is a resolution that's gained, great. If not, or not happy with that, then the next step is to go to the school administration to be able to bring it to their attention as well, so that we can be able to hopefully solve any issues or address any concerns at the lowest level possible.
Yeah, thanks, Matt. That's probably going to be the quickest way to get resolution as well, so. Okay, let's move on then. Committee reports. The floor is yours, Mr. Nelson.
Okay, so I'll start with construction reports. We have a meeting set up at, for the Sanford High School, Sanford Regional Technical Center, with, to focus on the mechanical systems and the freeze trip issues that we've been having. We kind of put those on pause during the summer months, and so we bring all the parties back together for a meeting on Friday, September 24th. That's really the main issue right now that's holding us up. All the other issues that are holding us up are issues that have been identified that we, as the Sanford School Department, are going to self-perform and then be able to bill those back to the contractor with that. So I'm working with Dawn Nichols to be able to work through those for that. So I hope to have another report back in October in terms of the follow-up from that September 24th meeting. And regarding Sanford Middle School, we are coming up on the one-year anniversary of opening that school, so we're gonna have, and the one-year warranty on that school for its substantial completion is being finished, is coming up at the end of this month. So we are in the process of putting a meeting together to walk the facility with the contractor, with the architect, with the Main Department of Education, with our facilities and maintenance people, as well as our school admin, so that we can make sure that if there are any warranty issues that are coming due in the one-year anniversary of opening that school, that we can make sure that we take care of those, to get all of those worked up. So we're looking at having that meeting next week on either Tuesday or Wednesday. Regarding Sanford Pride Elementary, we have opened the school year. So now that we have got the school year opened, we are also setting up a meeting with the contractor, as well as the architect and the Main Department of Education and our school personnel people, so that we can walk that facility as well now that it's come up and opened, to also identify if there are any issues. And regarding the playground, originally, that playground was supposed to be shipped last Friday. It is now not going to be shipped until this Wednesday, and the playground installers are going to have people on-site next Monday on September 20th to be able to start the install for that. So there has been moved back on another delay. We also had subcontractors who were scheduled to come in to do some of the lining on the playground, and they were not able to get here in times. So the contractor's now looking at a different subcontractor to come in and do that. So that is the update on both the Sanford Pride, as well as the middle school, as well as the high school and the technical center.
Any questions for Matt? Okay, thanks, Matt. I still can't get used to the construction updates being that short. It just doesn't seem right.
I can make them longer if you want.
I think we're good, Matt, I think we're good. You've got enough in the bank on that one already. Okay, the Performing Arts Advisory Committee, Paula, you got anything for us? All good? Just kind of in a holding pattern, kind of waiting to see how the COVID stuff shakes out?
To come and do his presentation.
Yeah, actually, we will have a presentation from Brett Williams, I think, the meeting after next, or something like that.
Yeah, we were, originally, we were looking at Brett coming to this meeting to help roll out his fall programming, especially before it goes out to the greater Sanford community for that. And with some of the uncertainty going on right now around COVID and the industry, and talking with Brett, he felt it was probably wise for us to hold off. And so we'll have Brett come and provide an update at the first meeting in October, and that should give us some more clarity around those times and still not impact his ability in terms of offering for his spotlight series of events that he's hopefully planning to offer in the Performing Arts Center this year.
Yeah, sounds good. Okay, so that's it for committee reports. Let's move on to the superintendent's report, and we have the Safe Return to School and Continuity of Instruction Plan update.
Okay, so, want to give people an update on how our return-to-school plan is going. We've had 20 positive cases to date, positive COVID cases to date among staff and students since school started. That does not count preseason athletics that were in place before school started. Out of those 20 positive cases, we have identified approximately 300 close contacts. Approximately 200 of those close contacts qualified as exceptions to quarantining due to their vaccination status or the universal masking and assigned seating procedures that we have in place. Out of those 100, with the 200 that didn't, there were 100 close contacts that did have to quarantine. So, right now, the exceptions for vaccinations and required face coverings with assigned seating are helping us to reduce the overall number of close contacts to help achieve our goal of having our kids in-school in-person five days a week. We are tentatively looking at beginning pool testing on a pilot basis during the week of September 27th, with a full district-wide implementation scheduled for the week of October 4th. That will also help us limit quarantines. I present that as an optimistic and best-case timeline that's dependent on us receiving the appropriate supplies and staffing. As part of his update tonight, Assistant Superintendent Steve Bucier will also provide a more detailed update on, on pool testing. But we're hoping to be able to add that as also another strategy to help keep our students in-school in-person five days a week safely. Our estimated staff vaccination rates, we had to report that to the Main Department of Education and Department of Health and Human Services last Friday. We reported with 65, 651 total staff. That is, that also includes contracted service people, our bus drivers. It also includes coaches. It also includes substitutes that we have in place that are working in our schools. Out of that 651, 488 are vaccinated. There were 60 that let us know they were unvaccinated, and there were another 103 that we don't know their status. So we've listed that, and that then goes into what the comes out for a 74.9% vaccination rate. That's of last Friday, September 10th. And the plan is to continue to be able to update that every month. So next month, we will be reaching out to the 60 who reported as being unvaccinated, as well as the 103 that were listed as unknown, to be able to see if their vaccination status has changed regarding that. We do have, with the 20 positive cases that we've had, we do have one of our schools, Carl J. Lamb Elementary School, which has been deemed an outbreak. That's when you have three cases, three positive cases that are linked for that. So we were notified on Friday that Carl J. Lamb is in outbreak status. We're in the process of setting up a meeting with the main CDC. This is not new territory for us. We were, last year, as we navigated COVID, we had a number of our schools that were also identified as outbreaks. I remember, I think we were the first school department, school in the state of Maine that was identified as an outbreak last year. And if you remember, at that time, we did go fully remote. Since that time, we've learned more about things, about that. And so, right now, the plan is, at this time, is not to go remote for Carl J. Lamb. We will continue to monitor the situation. There are school districts in Maine, there are school districts in York County, who have had to have entire schools go fully remote. So right now, it is our plan not to be able to do that. We have five students who are in our grades K through eight, who have the medical exemption, and they are fully remote. And we have one student at Sanford High School who has that medical qualification to be fully remote at Sanford High School. We are tentatively looking. We've made some preliminary plans right now to be able to hopefully hold homecoming events at Sanford High School later this month. We are cautiously optimistic and committed to organizing a safe event for our students. It's not going to be the same as always, but we are looking at trying to continue with a pep rally to hold that outside at Alumni Stadium. We're looking at the carnival also being spaced apart outside as well, along with the homecoming dance. And so, we're moving ahead cautiously with those. I do want to say that all plans are subject to change, depending on any COVID restrictions and regulations, but we are moving forward with that. I also checked in with our medical professionals at York Hospital. They report that universal masking is still recommended by the CDC. At this time, York Hospital can't give us any specific metrics, but they are believed that before any change happens, the metrics should all be trending down. And also noticed that infections that, so far this week, look like they may have plateaued. We had recently come into seeing increased numbers. What I've been trying to do is take the information that I get from the York County Emergency Management Agency update, along with the data that we know about Sanford School Department, and put that into like a daily metric sheet that I will try to be, that has been sending out to the school committee that can show how we are trending in certain areas that way in terms of just kind of an idea of where the metrics are. There is a train of thought out there that some people believe that the face coverings should be worn until everyone is eligible for vaccination, and that we achieve a vaccination rate over the, overnight, greater than 90%, and a positivity rate less than 1% in terms of that. We have our students, in terms of the eligible students in Sanford Middle School and Sanford High School, who are eligible for the vaccine. We still fall in that 45% to 49% range for that, and we do have vaccination clinics scheduled both at Sanford High School and Sanford Middle School later this month for the first dose, and then the second dose is also scheduled that way. So, that's an update in terms of how things are going back for us. I will entertain any questions or any
Comments?
Comments on that.
Anything from the school committee? Anybody? Well, the only thing I want to, I mean, this, the water drinking thing has come up a couple times previously and with somebody else, and I know Matt Peterman replied in email to the one lady that had brought that up today. So I think maybe just for the people at home, just kind of a quick update on kind of what's happening with that, in case other people have the same question.
Sure, so one of the things we're trying to do in our classrooms is trying to have as much space as possible. Now, that's in some situations, depending on where the class is, where it's offered, what the class is, we are able to be able to maintain that spacing, but we are not able to do that in all situations at the middle school or at the high school in terms of some of the classes that they have. That's one of the things, by us getting our kids back to school in-person five days a week. If you remember, last year, we had people coming for two days a week. Then we increased that to four days a week, but we still didn't have all of our students. So in those situations, you had people who were used to being able to be spaced apart, where they can be able to take their mask down for a drink. In those situations where there's not enough space to be able to do that, rather, what teachers are asking students to do is to step out into the doorway, away from where people are, to be able to take the mask down, have their water break, and then be able to come back to class. So I think that's what you saw in terms of Mr. Peterman's response for that, and he's also going to be presenting later tonight, if you want to be able to get him, ask him more.
Yeah, I just thought it might be good for clarification for people watching. It's not like we're not allowing the kids to drink. It's like we just want them away from the other kids as the mask is down and they're drinking.
In those situations where, because if you remember, one of the things that the CDC has said, they've put a priority in getting people back to school. So that's something where, yes, distancing is a mitigation strategy, but it is not something that's going to keep people out of school. That's why we have the additional other mitigation strategies that we have in place to be able to do that for.
Gotcha. And the only other thing I want to bring up, just the concern about the mask breaks, that really, Leah, right? That was your name? We haven't seen that in email a lot, but, you know, to me, that was one of the things going into this. I really did want to make sure that the kids had every opportunity they possibly could to get outside, get away from it. Thanks. Okay, thanks, Tammy. I'd rather not be interrupted in the middle of speaking, though, please, thank you. So, just something, maybe, I don't know, I don't know off the top of your head, but just something maybe to follow up on and make sure that we are doing as much as we can to get the kids out. Okay, Amy? Oh, do we have students over here? Here we go.
So as far as like the high school, I know a lot of teachers are not really putting them into their schedule because obviously they want to teach and learn. them into their schedule, because obviously they want to teach and learn, unless there's a specific thing they want to do outside. Like I know that my physics teacher is having us do a lab outside, that, because it's going to shoot up into the sky and we don't have enough room for that. But also mostly, it's like, if students ask, that's when they say, okay, let's go take a mask break then. So it's not really teacher-led, it's more student and their preference, just for everyone's information.
Okay, thanks, Bella. Anything to add to that, Grace?
I just know that like in my SRTC class, we are also not doing masks breaks. He's kind of like, if you need one, then it's your responsibility to go outside and take the time that you need, because we also have a door to our, to the outside in our classroom. So it's kind of like student-led rather than teacher.
Gotcha, yeah. So that is interesting, because I know some students might be uncomfortable doing that, so maybe that's something to discuss, so. Did you have something? Yeah, the kids are probably, just so people at home, Leah from the audience actually just saying that, just agreeing that it is difficult for some kids to speak up, because they, you know, don't want to kind of stand out or anything, so.
And I would add, it's difficult for all students, not just the elementary students, but I think it could also be difficult for high school students to be able to also come up, be able to speak up as well.
Oh, that you don't want to seem weak in front of the other students?
I don't know why, but like, I know some people upset by it.
I could get that, yeah, kind of a little intimidation.
So what I was going to say was kind of more regarding the, you know, the high school, you guys are, we're trying to teach, or the staff is trying to teach you to self-advocate, right, order for yourself, speak for yourself, which is not in everybody's wheelhouse, I guess, as they're learning it in the high school setting, especially younger kids for sure. But in the elementary school, you know, listening to you and also knowing a lot of families with little kids who are kind of, I'm hearing the same thoughts as well, and having two that are in the elementary as well. I think, you know, and, you know, when Susan's up here, you know, I wonder if you'll be able to just touch upon it, just with like the mask breaks and being able to, I know last year, people, the term mask break was not really want, what I heard was it was not really wanting to be used in the sense of that term. I'm not quite sure why, but I do wonder, you know, kind of setting a little bit more of a, I don't want to say policy, but you know, that such and such time, time of day that the little ones are able to kind of go out and kind of get these breaks, especially because today was still pretty warm, I had my AC still running, so I guess just kind of while we're still through the warm weather.
Yeah, before you know it, it's going to be zero degrees out, and that mask break's going to be rough, it's going to be.
They still be necessary, you know what I mean?
I believe Mr. Mabes actually wants to make a comment. Can we turn him live? So remember, Beth, you can cut him off if he starts going down a bad path, so. Jonathan, are you there? Is he still muted? Is he muted himself? Yep, it's all you, man. Thanks, Jonathan. Okay, so it's on the radar now. Anything else anybody else wants to chat about, or we good? Okay. Let's move on then, Mr. Nelson, it looks like we got a field trip.
Sure, the boy soccer team has put in a request for a field trip. This is an activity that they had always done in the past, up until last year, obviously couldn't do it under the circumstances. It's an end-of-the-season celebration for them, part of a fundraiser that they use for them for their program and their team. I had some initial concerns about it, saying, hey, is this something we really want to be able to do under the circumstances? And I talked with Gordy Salz, our athletic director, and understanding that they will have to follow any of the requirements that are in place for that. As of right now, anybody riding buses, this is a requirement that's not from the school department, but it's a federal requirement that they will have to wear the face coverings. And so in talking with Athletic Director Salz, I am comfortable in terms of bringing this forward to the, and authorizing it. I just wanted to also, as part of our policy, let people know that in the report, in my reports, that's when I usually mention this, and it is still a couple months away, looking at November seventh, where they're going down to Foxborough to be able to watch a professional soccer game.
Good, any questions? No? Okay, thanks, thanks, Matt. So now we're going to move on to the directors' reports. We're just going to run right down through these in order, I assume?
Yep.
Mr. Peterman, I assume we have you on Zoom, unless you're hiding somewhere in the room?
No, I'm on Zoom.
I know you're pretty stealthy. You could be right behind me.
That's pretty good. I've never really known to be stealthy with my size, but that's, I appreciate you coming. Good evening, everybody. We are off to a great start at Sanford High School. It has been a very busy start. With eleven hundred students in the building, and about two hundred sending-school SRTC students in the morning, and then two hundred more coming and going in the afternoon, it's got that big school feel again to it. So there's lots of kids in the building. Makes me happy, worries me sometimes, but like I said, it has been a good start thus far. We started out our first day with SRTC students attending their appropriate session, and with ninth-grade students attending just with, just themselves, so we can help orient them to the school, let them know how to work, meet with them, help them understand how they earn credits, and all that fun stuff. Again, very successful athletics, as Mr. Nelson had said, are in full swing. We're, he's probably a third, or at least a good solid quarter of the way through the seasons right now with each sport. And our teachers, over the, these past several days and the past two weeks, have spent a lot of time getting to know their students. We've been working with circles and historic practices and social-emotional learning, making those positive and lasting connections with our students. A lot of that took place at Spartan Time, but it also took place in the academic classrooms I was able, and class advisors were able to meet with all four classes. We just did them on different days in the Performing Arts Center. Even the two hundred and fifty-plus students in the PAC skipping seats, it makes it look really full. But it was good to be able to at least see them, talk to them, and everyone seems to be very excited and happy to be back. Some of our buses are arriving at about six forty-five in the morning, and I think our last bus is pointing to departing right around two forty or two forty-five. We are extremely excited that now in the cafeteria, all students can get free breakfast and lunch. We've been pushing that and making sure that students know about that, and our numbers continue to trend upward and pay the free food. Other than that, technology is out. Like I said, I think people are starting to fall back into that routine. This will be our first full week of school, full five days, so it'll be very interesting to see how everyone feels this week. There'll be some people probably a little tired, even the students, so. Again, been a great start, and that's all I got.
Have any questions for Mr. Peterman? Amy?
Hey, Matt, just out of curiosity, when you say that there's fifteen hundred at a given time, or I guess thirteen hundred at a given time, in the high school with like the two hundred in the morning and two hundred in the afternoon with the SRTC from the sending schools, how many staff total do you have right now?
Well, we have.
From kitchen to custodians to, like?
Yeah, if you include the SRTC staff in the building, there's about a hundred and sixty.
Okay. I thought there were more, okay. Awesome.
And just in regards to students at the high schools, Matt mentioned, we're just under eleven hundred, based on the numbers we ran today. Two hundred and seventy-one ninth graders, two hundred and fifty-eight tenth graders, two hundred and seventy-five eleventh graders, and two hundred and eighty-eight seniors for that ten ninety-two total. And as Matt mentioned, that Sanford High School doesn't take into account the SRTC students from the sending schools, who are also coming in for a morning session and an afternoon session.
Okay, anything else, Amy?
I forgot to give us the enrollments, so I'm trying to roll those in based on any opportunity that I get, in case you notice, so sorry about that.
I'm super excited to hear that clubs were starting back up as well as, you know, I knew the athletics were, but that the clubs were also up and going, so I was excited to hear about that. And I had also heard that from my daughter on the way home from practice, that they had a dress code discussion today, which I was also very excited to hear, so thank you for that.
Is that everything, Amy?
That's it.
Okay, Paula?
Actually, yeah.
I could sense, like behind me, that you had something to say, yeah.
So I'm just, I guess, out of curiosity, when the kids got to school this week, the first week, do you have a presentation for them where you go through what the day is going to look like considering COVID? You know, rules, protocols, et cetera? Does every teacher do that with their classes, so that, you know, is it, is it the same for every teacher, or, you know what I mean? I guess I'm just trying to get a clear picture as to what the student's day is like at the high school, and if they are clear as to what is expected to them regarding COVID procedures, and making sure that they're not getting mixed messages from one teacher to another. And then we hear the brunt of it when they get home, if we do.
If we do. Mine don't say anything, but.
Hypothetically?
Yeah.
Yeah, we essentially, like I said, that ninth-grade day tends to be very scripted, and we, we take them from the moment the bell rings at seven fifty on that freshman day, and take them into the PAC and kind of go over everything. The rest of the classes, when they come in, we have a, you know, a list of items that need to be gone over, any rule changes, bell schedules, things like that. We try to get all that information out, and then spend a little bit more time on that Spartan Time, just to make sure everyone is on that same page. Occasionally, there are a few things where maybe somebody didn't see an update to something that might get, one class might have not heard something, but we try to make sure that that gets caught up the second day.
Okay, thank you.
I had one more thing.
Sure, Amy.
I know that Mr. Nelson spoke about homecoming, and I'm pulling my calendar out, and I can't believe it seems that it's two weeks away. With, is there any more information you can give us regarding that? Especially since, you know, the freshmen, the sophomores really didn't have a homecoming. They did get to experience it briefly as eighth graders, so sophomores really didn't get to experience, freshmen certainly have not gotten to experience it. So just kind of when I hear, you know, about the carnival and know that it obviously will be different than it was that you guys got to experience your freshman sophomore year, is there any information you can give us, if it is so close?
Yeah, I mean, as Mr. Nelson had spoken about earlier, we're going to try and do everything you can outside to include that pep rally, so if anyone's got any connections with Mother Nature, please make sure to grant us at least that Friday a great day. Even if it's a little cooler, I'm okay with that. We just don't want any rain or anything like that, but we've, we've got contingencies for a lot of different things, like you said, to be held outside. We've got other ways that we can conduct things if we need to, because we get stocked with rain or something as well. If, if all goes well, and again, I'm not a predictor of, I'm not a scientist with the numbers and things, but we're really hoping, you know, what Mr. Nelson said, that oh, is coming, and then we'll start to see a downward trend. We would love to be able to have a homecoming dance right outside where Project Brad did the, the little concert right outside Fire Science on that Saturday night. We had pretty good success with that. We made a noise complaint or two, but that's because that one went a little later. The dance did not go that late, so I don't think we'd have any issues with that, but that would allow us to have a nice opportunity to have the dance.
And Matt, the information just, we've been talking about this, and so the information for the homecoming just went out, I think, to staff this weekend on Friday afternoon to get that information out. So I think is, you're going to see more information coming soon. The last thing we want to do is also get something out there and then take it away from the kids as well. So it's, it's one of those things that we're cautiously optimistic. I'm hopeful that pool testing can also be available on October, the week of October fourth, because that would be the week after, that would be the day we come back to school after, after homecoming events in terms of the dance Saturday night.
Okay. Oh, Grace, yeah, sure, sorry, Grace.
So about homecoming, are you going to plan, you said you were going to have the activities outside, are you going to plan for social distancing, or are you going to have people like masked? Or are you just going to pack everybody in there?
Where are we packing?
Yeah, they were talking about the pep rally being like on the football field, are you just going to have all the students on the bleachers without masks, or?
And try to stay three feet apart, or like?
No, we've got, we've got a fairly decent plan for that. Seaters will be down on the field.
Yes.
Because I do believe you all have probably your traditional seating area, so we might as well push down there, we've got plenty of chairs. And then we would likely put somebody on, one class on the visitor's side, and then two classes on the opposite sides of the bleachers to be spaced out.
Okay, thank you.
That's a good question, Grace. So Matt, the only thing I wanted to ask you was, you know, we're being very cognizant of the impact to the students. It's also a big adjustment for the staff to be coming back in. How do you feel that the staff is adjusting to, to everything coming back in?
I think they're adjusting fairly well. You could tell, especially the end of last week, and even the end of that first week, going four days was, you know, building that endurance back up again. You know, there were some people like, geez, I was tired, tired as a bear as well. It just, everything moves so much quicker when you have that many kids in the building and everyone is focused on all kinds of different things, you know, between, you know, masks and greeting everybody and saying hello, and getting back into the academia of the school year. It's, it's been interesting, but I think we're hitting our stride.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Anything else for Matt? Okay, we're good. Let's move on to Principal Lyden. Do we have you out there? Okay, that's good. Thanks for reassuring me.
Just want to thank everybody for the opportunity to have us come out tonight, and really share the positives that have gone on at school. the positives that have gone on at school. We certainly respect that we're coming off a kind of wonky year and things are still valid through a pandemic and we do have some challenges, but I do want to say that we've got a lot of really good positives that we have seen here starting off the year. And I really want to keep a lens on that, so I think it's important for our students, our staff, and our community. So actually, a couple of things to share. I want to give a big shout out. I felt open house was really positive. We staggered, we did two breaks on two different nights. It was really great to see the community come in. It was an awesome crowd. I felt the energy was really good. I'm starting to age myself having students that I had years ago come in and now their students are at our school, but it's just really nice to see things come around full circle. A couple of positive moments that I want to share. I want to give some kudos to our student leadership team who spent some time, a couple weeks before school, coming in and giving tours to some anxious students and just some families that want to get ahead of it and get their kiddos in and see the building and hold their classes up front of baby and then get ahead of some questions. So I thought that was really cool that I had, you know, a good team of students come in and all to their time and really stepped up and were great leaders. Some things, I know that Mr. Williams, Mr. Strapiu, and myself are getting into classrooms. Teachers are doing an excellent job with those restorative circles, which is the time to really connect with a cohort of kids and make sure we're, you know, really paying attention to the social emotional wellbeing as well as a variety of topics that arise with the middle school kiddos. The energy getting into the classrooms, students, I mean, certainly I know they're stressed with the wear of masks, et cetera, but kids are just excited to be at school. It's nice to go in and see them and help whole group discussions, getting engaged in activities. So that's kind of real positive. And pulling kiddos aside and inside conversations with them, I mean, they're certainly advising years, they're the direct source of information you're going to get on how things are going. And I pulled a couple of kiddos aside the last couple of weeks and I said, hey, guys, how are things going? And some of their responses were, it's just nice being back at school this weekend. Couple of kiddos playing sports. We have our first game tonight. The girls soccer team are really psyched about playing marsh play, which is just good to see their positive energy. Couple of kiddos, our school counselors have been really, really nice and helpful. Teachers have been welcoming. Kids are excited. Actually, we ban instead of zooming in in person, we have a full band together, chorus together, and the kids are really psyched about some of the after, after school clubs that are going to start. I think that's really important to hear those student voices. And certainly caring when things aren't going well for them as well. We've had a couple of restorative circles. I know Amy had mentioned dress code. Really met with the kids and kind of heard their perspective. We had some short, sweet, small assemblies this morning, just going through those expectations on being at school, being in a pandemic, being safe, all expectations, conscious expectations. We're just going to continue to review and try to keep everybody safe at school. I do want to give another kudos to our school nurse, Mrs. Gray, Mrs. Madison. They've been really being diligent on keeping our students and staff safe. They're really fortunate to have them on our team, really great new additions. Our front office team, sometimes that's the first base these kids are seeing when they come to school. They're warm, they're welcoming, they're friendly. I think that's really, really important. Our school librarian, Lou Williams, she's got that library topic right now. It's so good to see these kids going in that library, grabbing books, and just getting involved in literacy and sharing how excited they are. So overall, I just want to say, being back in person, I know, I know we're in a pandemic and there's definitely stresses, there's a lot of positives. It really makes my heart feel good when I come in and I see these kids just being happy to be at school. And certainly, I'm not trying to sugarcoat it, there's definitely obstacles in the middle school. We get those bumps on the road. We'll handle the bumps, we'll collect and revise, but the most important thing is just to make this educational experience the best for these kids academically, socially, emotionally. And that's, that's why we're here, we do. We've had a couple of really awesome random acts of kindness. I reached out to the PTA, the front of our school was looking a little shouting. We had the PTA come together, they muzzled beds up front. We had people donate lungs. They can't lock, entered these blocks with these really positive message, messages over our weekend. So awesome. And then I had two eighth grade boys, Spencer, Georgina, and Vicki, show on the weekend. They noticed that the front lawn was getting a little long. Without being asked by me or anybody, those two boys showed up with their lawn mowers and rolled the whole front of the school. That, that is awesome. That is pride right there. We have a great community, a great parent group. It takes a team. It's not just the staff, it's the kids, it's the parents. And the ultimate goal is just to make this year really excellent for the kids. So again, I see like we're off to a good start. We're up sharing the positives. I think that's really important. I think that just fills, fills our hearts and schools to keep moving forward. I'm not saying there are difficulties and challenges. There certainly are, but I continue to reflect, revise, and work together as a team.
Great, thanks Pam. Do we have questions? Mr. Rue?
No, I don't have a question, but Pam, thank you so much, that optimism. Will you welcome me back in as a student? Because the way you're talking, I want to go back there. Keep up the good work. I really do appreciate hearing you talk like that about the students, the teachers, and all the staff and everybody about it. Thank you.
Anything else, Amy?
Yeah, thank you, thank you Pam. I was just, because I'm going through Matt's, Mr. Nelson's, the numbers that we had gotten with students that we have enrolled this year and it, you, and just for the public to know how many staff, I mean, students that you have at the middle school, as of whenever you sent this, Matt, Sunday, I think, was like nine hundred and seventy. I don't know if that give, give or take.
Nine hundred and sixty-eight as of eight AM this morning.
Nine, eight, sorry, nine sixty-eight?
Nine sixty-eight.
Sorry, I'm off by two, excuse me. And then how many staff do you have?
Amy, we're, we're ready around and I'm going to be off a little bit, around a hundred and thirty.
Okay. Awesome. That is awesome. And then I'm so excited just, just to go, you know, with what you were just saying, that I, I'm just, I'm excited to hear about the restorative circles that are going on and just the SEL, you know, when we had talked or when the two, Paula and I and Jonathan had got to attend with the principals, we got to hear, you know, back before school started about, you know, what was going on and what the preps were going to, with school starting and what, you know, giving the kids kind of this opportunity to kind of get to know each other and build connections. So I'm excited that this is happening and that it's working out well. And I'm definitely excited to hear that not just the athletics have started back up, but that clubs will be starting soon. Awesome, thank you so much.
Anything, Paula? No? Well, actually Pam, I'm going to kind of ask you the same thing I was asking Matt. How's the, how's the staff adjusting? And you guys have kind of the, the added dynamic of really being in a new building for the first with everybody there and then also it was kind of going to be a tight squeeze coming in with all the COVID stuff too, right?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, Mr. Jameson, from last year when we came in, the building was, it was getting there, we're almost getting to the finish line, but certain people were coming in really nervous and I really reflected and revised and of course, we're, we're being centered by our staff, they're, they're out there, they're doing the most important job in the whole wide world, so we can ensure that they're welcoming and mistaking care. So we've come in, making sure that we've set up optional supportive circles for staff that are feeling anxious, really feel like our staff may be getting off the air with a really good positive energy. The PTA is going to come, we're going to do acts of kindness, we're constantly around checking in and getting feedback to reflect and revise. And I'm really going to be proud, I could spell our staff at Sanford Middle School. They do a, do a great job and are a great team over there.
It's good to hear. Any other questions or comments for Principal Lyden? All good? Okay. Then we will move on to Sanford Pride Elementary and we have Principal Inman here. So welcome, thanks for coming out.
Thanks for having me. I just want to say I am very grateful to have the opportunity to be here with you in Sanford, starting my fourth year. And it's so great to be here to talk to you about our new building. Just so you know, we have three hundred and eleven as of today. That's our enrollment. We have twenty-two classrooms, K through four. Within those twenty-two classrooms, we have three self-contained behavioral classrooms. This year, we have two classes that are looping, excuse me. So a looping classroom is when a teacher stays with their students for two years. So one of those classrooms is at the kindergarten level and the other one is at the third grade level. So we're really excited to have that opportunity. It's a huge commitment for teachers to understand and be experts in two curriculums. Not only the academic curriculum, but to understand developmentally and socially children at different ages. I've had experience with looping before, I've seen the positive gains. We're really looking forward to seeing how the data is going to line up with these two groups of children. We welcomed kindergarteners this year. We moved into the building August sixth and at that time we had about forty-five, fifty kindergarteners. Third week of August, we were at eighty-five. Not sure exactly where the eighty-five came from. They are not people that moved in, they were here, but they moved into pride and we're really happy to have them. Having kindergarteners in your building really changes the dynamic. Our open house this year, as Pam and Matt had talked about, our attendance had to be at least ninety-eight percent. We checked with all, I checked with all my classroom teachers the next day and I can only think of two classrooms that maybe were missing one or two families. Everybody came out in that heat. I also had people from the community come who were there. I had one gentleman, he sticks in my mind, he says, I was here in nineteen eighty and I wanted to come and see what the building looked like. And he had just made his way through and he said, wow, he said, it's really impressive. He said, it doesn't look like a junior high anymore. He just, does have that elementary feeling, so that was really nice. I think there were more community members there who I didn't get a chance to speak with, but it was really nice to have, not families there, but the community there, so that was really awesome to have them there. We finished our first two weeks successfully. We did our fire drills that we needed to do. Fire alarm is a little bit different than we had at Willard. The kids are appreciative of that and it went off really well. We are also very fortunate, we have service dogs in our building. They have been instrumental for our children and our staff members. Whether you're a kindergartner, a first grader, a second grader, a third grader, a fourth grader, they just bring so much love and caring to our community. We just started our read dog program this, this week where students can sign up and go and read with a dog. And last year, we collected just some informal data on that and we really saw reading scores go up on that, so we're excited to see how that goes this year. Like Matt and Pam talked about, we're all about SEL too, social emotional learning. Our day starts with morning meeting. Every classroom has morning meeting in the beginning of the day. The other thing that I'm really happy to see this year is our older students volunteering at the end of the day to help kindergarteners get to where they need to go. We're averaging about fifty, sixty families a day picking their children up and dropping them off. So matching children at the end of the day with their correct families is really a feat and we figured it out, but we have some threads out there and our fourth graders have volunteered their time to make sure that they can help the adults get the children where they need to be at the end of the day. So we're very proud of our fourth graders for doing that. We're also going to be offering Mrs. Menino and our other music teacher in the district, Heather Hastings, they're going to be starting a, a fourth grade chorus. We did that before the pandemic in two thousand and nineteen with the idea to feed the middle school and the high school choruses, so we're really excited we can do that again this year. We can finally sing again, so we're very happy about that. We also have a juggling club going on in our school with fourth graders as well. Pam talked about PTA. We have a wonderful PTA. We continue to be combined with MCS School as a PTA. We're going to continue on that road for a little bit. We've had conversations about splitting up those groups, but for right now, we're going to be together. The benefits of being together is more opportunities for more children, so we're going to be doing that. And we are, as I said, I moved into my office August sixth and it's been a work in progress. The colors are wonderful, the floors are wonderful, the windows are wonderful, but our, our biggest challenge is taking that junior high footprint and making it fit in an elementary piece. So we have our kindergarteners up here and here's our gym on the lower level and that's where they come in in the morning and they're dismissed in the morning and the afternoon. So trying to, and that's where they go to have gym. If you know, if you know the junior high, you know that down by the gym, there were all those locker rooms. Well, all those rooms have been converted for art and music. Beautiful rooms, beautiful rooms. But that's where the kids have to go for their specials. So it's trying to, still trying to manage those ways to get to places on time and, and those types of things. So that's probably our biggest challenge at, at this point is trying to, it's, it's, it's enough to open the school and have kindergarten, but then you have that other layer of being in a building that you're not used to yet and making all these routines of that, oh, I thought I had that, but I really don't have that. So that's still our challenge, but it's not really a big challenge. It, it helps us grow stronger as a team as we work through these pieces. We are still working on, Matt talked about the playground, that's coming in, we hope next week. We also ordered, we're very fortunate to have cafeteria tables come in. Those are coming October fifth, we think. And our circulation desk in our library, which is, our library is still a work in progress, thanks to Valerie Sullivan for all her hard work. She just keeps plugging away at that library. We're expecting to see our circulation desk this week. And that's about it. For pride.
Great, thank you, Susan. Do we have questions? Amy?
I was just curious, how, how is the drop off? I was part, I'm part of a, like a brief, brief conversation about the drop off in the beginning of the, or not even the beginning, the middle of the process, and I was just curious how that was working out.
I mean, I think it's going well. We're using the same system that we did last year at Willard. It's almost like a valet system. But, you know, for some parents, they're waiting five or 10 minutes, but they're patient. You know, we're, I do that duty with a team of people and we're getting to know the families really well, so we can recognize your car and like, oh, that's the Savini people, you know. So that's working really well. The way that it's laid out is, it's good. Parents come in through Memorial Gym, they come in and they snake around. I think the spacing is really good. Our buses are up top and they're getting out and in on time. We adjusted our kindergarten bus pickup to, when the kindergarteners get on the buses in the afternoon, they're stopping up by the tennis courts. We load them on first, we move the buses down to the main entrance and then we have the rest of the kids come on and that's working out really, really well. So.
Good. Anything else, Amy?
I was, I, I'm just really curious about the staffing. How, and how many staff, you said today you had three hundred and eleven students with staff, how many staff?
We're about seventy, seventy-five. I mean, we have some contracted service folks who work with our special ed students, so.
And I'm so excited to hear about the playground that it's coming soon and then hopefully that'll, you know, aid, just, you know, touching upon, you know, what that mom had brought up. Has there been like conversations around the masks, like with the breaks for the kids?
Well, we, the kids get an hour, a break, hour break every day. That's a half hour lunch, half hour recess, so there's no mask there. Then there's another break during the day, whether it's morning or afternoon. It just depends on how old you are and it's fully, it's, it's my understanding that those breaks are outside. Now, I'm going to check on that, but I do know for my kindergarteners and my first graders, because they have the longer schedule, they eat later, I know they're outside during their snack, no, not on a rainy day, but they're outside with their snacks and they're taking breaks. I do know that.
Okay.
I'm excited about the juggling club. I just think that's amazing.
Yeah, me too.
And the fourth grade chorus, like I love a club, so.
I know, me too.
That's awesome, thank you.
That's great. Anything from you, Paula? Okay, great. Hey, thanks a lot. Okay, now we're on to Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Bousier.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a couple of things to update you folks on this evening. The first one is our professional evaluation, professional growth system, which is the teacher evaluation system. Every year at the, when we close the school year, we take time as administrative team and as the PE PG Steering Committee to reflect on what's working well, what's not working well, and what are some adjustments that need to be made. And we did that work over the summer and one of the challenges we had this year with the increase in staff is the sheer number of evaluation. is the sheer number of evaluations that our administrators have on the plate. If you remember from our evaluation system, new teachers, they receive an evaluation three times during the year, fall, winter, and spring, and they receive that for their first three years. So, we hire close to sixty staff members. That's a tremendous amount of evaluations that have been added to the plate. And so, we worked with the teachers' union. We worked with the PE PG committee and the administrators. And we looked at what were some adjustments we could make to the system, but at the same time, provide high quality feedback to staff. Because a teacher evaluation is one of the most important things that we do as administrators. And so, we've done one major thing. And that is, we have added department chairs into the process of evaluating teachers once again. They formerly did that previously. And so, department chairs will be evaluating all first year teachers once. As part of that, we're going to have to provide some training for these folks. And so, we're going to be scheduling training over the month of October and the beginning of November to get these folks trained. In addition to adding the department chairs, we also, the central office staff, we're going to take on some of those evaluations at the elementary level because our elementary administrators do not have department chairs to support them. So, Beth and I are going to take some of those evaluations on to support our elementary administrators. So, that's a PE PG update we have. We've made some tweaks to our online system that should streamline the process a little bit. But the big one is, you know, adding the department chairs into that system for evaluation with that. Pre-K. We're excited the pre-K is up and going once again. Sanford pre-K at SRTC. If you remember, we have a morning session and an afternoon session. And then we contract with Head Start for a full day program. We conducted screening on August 30th and August 31st for all incoming pre-K students. Similar to the screening they do for incoming kindergarteners, we do the same process with our pre-K students. And then we welcome them the Tuesday after Labor Day for their first day. Things have gone pretty well so far. We do have some slots left in the program. We, from our own pre-K program at SRTC, we had some kiddos that ended up finding slots in the full day program at Head Start. We have had some families that have decided to stay home due to the pandemic. And then we've also had some late CDS placements for students with special needs. We've had some late placements that have impacted our enrollments at pre-K. So, if you know of anybody who's looking for a slot, we do have a couple of slots available. And they should reach out to central office if they are interested in registering. Pool testing. We were joking with central office team that the pool testing is going to take over for construction in terms of the report, so. Over the summer, I had an opportunity, we went, the nurses and I, we went to training and they overviewed. This is what pool testing is. And they gave us a lowdown and we shared it with the committee over the summer. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend onboarding training with Concentric, which is a company that has been contracted to run the pool testing in the state of Maine. It's a company out of Massachusetts. And basically, they led us through step by step. These are the things you need to do to get pool testing up and running in your district. Since the training, we have set up accounts for all of our schools. We've added users. We have ordered supplies and the supplies have arrived, they arrived today at our schools. We are working on securing staff to support the program. This is going to be the biggest challenge to getting pool testing up and running is going to be staffing. Concentric, they have referred us to an agency. They've taken down what we need to try to get us staff. So, we're going that route, but we have also reached out to the agency that we use to contract our CNAs last year to see if it would be possible if Concentric can fill our need to have our CNAs come onboard to help with that testing. So, we're chipping away at that and hope to have an answer soon. Been working on a presentation for parents and staff. It's almost finalized. I'm envisioning putting that out on the website this week. I think it's going to be pretty self-paced. It's rather short, to the point. And so, I will post it for parents to view when they have the free time. But I also do plan on doing some type of parent night next week, a virtual one, to run parents through if they have any questions. Also, along with that, it will be an online registration that will be available later this week. And each school has their own code. And so, parents can go in and register their kiddo, enter the code, and then we'll get that information in the system. And then from there, we'll need to organize those pools. And that's the second challenge. One will be the staffing. The second one will be getting all those pools organized, especially at the high school with eleven hundred students with that. So, any questions? That's all I have for you this evening.
Questions? No, we're good? Oh, wait. I know Amy's got one now, maybe.
I know that Mr. Nelson had mentioned, I'm trying to find my notes, that we were going to, that the hope is to do a pilot testing first. Who was the pilot testing planning on being? And I'm just curious, just because I know that the last meeting, to me, I think starting small, and I guess that's the whole point of a pilot testing, athletics to me just kind of came to mind, but I was just curious.
We haven't decided exactly who would be the pilot. I think it's going to depend who looks like we're up and ready to roll. It may actually be the elementary schools.
Okay.
Because the elementary schools, just how they are organized with homerooms and they have their homerooms for a period of time, that may be where we start the pilot.
Okay.
But Matt and I have also talked about, maybe it's the athletic teams. So, it's basically going to be who's ready to roll.
Okay.
With that.
More, Amy?
Well, I guess, I do have more, but I feel like we're, you're still, we're still kind of waiting on, like, there's not, none of the details have been worked out because of the staffing and all that. Because obviously, this is a huge, like I've said before, my friend, she's a school counselor actually. And for her middle school, she's actually who is responsible, so, or in charge of the swabbing and all that. Has it been, you know, when do these agencies come in or, you know, when you outsource it to CNAs or whatever they were recommending? Is it something that they kind of do throughout the day? Is it, are any of that, those details been told to you, I guess, from the people that have already been doing it?
So, basically, we've gone in and we've ordered the supplies and the supplies will arrive every week. Testing, pool testing will take place on Monday and Tuesday, the initial pool testing.
Yeah.
We'll send them away. It will take forty hours, forty-eight hours to get the results back. And then we'll have, if we get positive pools to come up, it will be Thursday and Friday where we do that follow-up testing. That's sort of logistics we've talked about at the moment. Does that answer your question?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
I, while you're up here, this has nothing to do with pool testing, but just because you being up here triggered me for this question. Because I feel like months ago, when we were talking about the free and reduced lunch forms.
Oh, yeah.
I was just curious if you feel like we've gotten a lot, just because that helps with the budget and the numbers. Do we have a sense of like, are we still kind of chasing those down? And when are those due, I guess, for?
October first.
Budgetary reasons.
October first is when we need to report.
So, it's coming down.
Yep. And they have been coming in on a steady basis. I think we've gotten quite a few forms back. So, parents have really done a nice job with getting those back to us. I don't have an exact number, Amy, but.
We have a huge pile down here at central office that we're now going through right now to kind of then see who we don't have them from, that we can also reach out there. So, early indications are that we've done a really, families have done a nice job of getting those back.
And those are the blue forms.
Blue forms, you got it.
Get them in.
Yeah, so anybody walking home doesn't remember, the free lunches and breakfast for everybody this year, we were concerned that parents wouldn't be submitting those free or reduced forms, which actually affect a number of other funding mechanisms, you know, besides just getting you that free or reduced lunch or breakfast. So, that's great. It's good to hear. Okay. Anything else, Steve?
Nope, that's it.
Anything else for Steve? Nope, I think we're good. So, now Cheryl, you're up with the year-end update. With, I guess, the preliminary look at how things went for the last fiscal year. Feel like I should be filling more as they're walking up. No?
So, I'm here tonight, I feel like this is annoying too, that we have a very preliminary look at year-end right now. Right now, I have us ending with an unassigned fund balance of two million dollars. But I want to go through some of the highlights of reasons why. The hybrid model created some savings along the way. We had staff out and some of the subs that were hired went through CRF money because the reason why they were out was due to COVID. So, that makes it so that we had savings there. We had a budget freeze starting from day one because we weren't sure if we were going to have a curtailment or not. And we had difficulties in getting items, getting services completed, all due to COVID. We had savings on items like books, supplies, textbooks, purchase services, maintenance equipment. We just couldn't get them. Transportation had some savings due to the athletics not happening and also some of the special ed that didn't happen. So, we had savings there. Also, along with some of the other stuff that they, you know, taking the van, there was, you know, small things, but it was all across the board. So, you, so there was just little pieces here and there, like no gas for any of the vans because we didn't take our bridge program anywhere and stuff like that. We had a couple of items go over budget, which is plowing and electricity for the junior high because we didn't know we were going to have to pay for the electricity for the junior high during construction. We didn't use federal funds to replace items, but we did maximize the usage of our CRF money, which, throughout the year. And we got a lot of things approved through there that helped us out in the long run. I'm working on an additional six hundred thousand that we may take into reserves because it's my opinion that if we came under budget on those items that we can reserve, we might as well do it while we can. And if we do that, it will also keep us under the state mandated percentage, which is also another piece we'd want to do. And then I'll be bringing those to a future meeting because I've got them pretty close, but we want to make sure that those amounts are, you know, exact. And that's all I've got.
I think I just also, as Cheryl mentioned, one of the things last year was, as we went into the year, we did put that budget freeze in immediately because we were worried about a curtailment that was going to be coming that ended up never coming. But we also had decreased enrollment. And we also had a number, over five hundred of our students who were fully remote in terms of what that was. And so, that's where you also had something that our budget had been originally built on in terms of looking at, and she highlighted everything from transportation, right? If, if right now, you have students that are not part of our school department, that we were planning on being part of our school department, you're going to be able to come back and have some savings there as looking at it. So, those are things that we're looking at where I think we're probably going to be set up a school committee workshop to be able to probably dig into these numbers a little bit deeper, to be able to come back and for us to strategize and plan how we can be able to maximize those being able going forward.
Oh, yeah. One of the items I didn't mention was, we had budgeted for building repairs and maintenance, but with all of our buildings being just either gone through construction or just finished, we really didn't utilize any of that money either. So, that's one of the items that we want to sit there that, and didn't spend all of our capital money just because you couldn't get the items. I mean, it was kind of a very unusual year. I'm still having trouble getting them. Like a playground.
Exactly. I was going to say, I'm glad you mentioned reserves because I think we're going to see, we've had this conversation before. You know, yeah, there were some savings through the pandemic and all of that, but I think it's going to, some of that's going to come back and catch us later on. So, if we can take some of that money and put it aside, that's a nice safety net.
Yeah. That's one of my concerns is that the rising of costs and prices could happen and will cut us off guard possibly because they are going up pretty quick, some of the prices of items. So, having those reserves are, would be good.
Okay, any questions for Cheryl?
Dawn, I just want to jump onto what you just said. The reason we did set up those reserve accounts through the taxpayers were for things like this. Looking forward, you will come back to the health insurance. Where is that one going to be going? And which we know that is one of our biggest bills, is the biggest bill that we have other than payroll. So, no, that's good. Let's find out more about it and see what we should be doing.
Sounds good.
I just wanted to make sure that I'd heard you clearly. Did you say that with the six hundred thousand dollars put into that reserve fund, then we would be at the percentage that?
Yeah, so, so the state mandates a five percent. And we would be slightly above that without doing any reserves for unassigned fund balance. So, to do that, it makes sense to do the reserves now so they get into our audit of financials.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Makes sense. Okay, great. Thanks, Cheryl. Beth, you're up with a curriculum update.
Hello, everyone. So, I'm just giving you a quick update. The Main Curriculum Leaders Association offered two different cohorts this year to districts around the state. One of them that was offered, they called it the equity, they offered an equity-centered cohort for any districts to look at our teaching practices. And so, they said you could have up to a team of six. So, I'm one of the members. And then I tried to be very strategic and make sure that we had all of the different grade levels represented as well as different perspectives. So, from the secondary level, Jen Raymond, the library media specialist, is joining us. The middle school level, Erin Berry, who's a social studies department chair, is part of the committee. And at the elementary level, Mark Bisson, the new assistant principal at Margaret Chase, Kristen Daly from Pride, and then Jen Skremman, who is a counselor. So, I have teachers, admin, and counselors, librarians, all into this cohort. It consists of five meetings from August of this summer till April of next year. It's facilitated by a gentleman called Lawrence Alexander from the Carney, Sando and Associates. He is a consultant for diversity, equity, and inclusion. Very dynamic man. Our first meeting was very, very engaging and very insightful. So, I don't want a lot of people to think about diversity, equity, inclusion. Certain things come to mind. What I like about this particular cohort is he's working with the districts to give us the tools and the knowledge so that we can look at our own district's curriculum to fit our needs. So, it's not one size or one thing fits all. He gives us what we need for information and we, as a team, create our cohort and our, and our curriculum. So, what he does, he has us looking at three things. First, he wants us to document the strengths. What are, what is your district currently doing that they're doing really well? Then we're going to look at what, to identify areas where we might need some growth. And then the third piece of the puzzle that he wants us to work on over the course of the year is to create resources that our district can use moving forward. So, some of the questions that he's having us ask as we go through this process is, are we supporting a variety of learning styles? Are our lessons including multiple perspectives? How do we bring forward quieter voices? When you talk about certain things in history, certain voices are louder than others. How do you make sure that those quieter voices that still hadn't, that were still impacted by what happened, that they're heard as well? Do our classrooms and school norms make everyone feel included, welcomed, and supported? That's part of the work. And then does our communication, or does our curriculum encourage critical thinking in our students when they're presented with new information? And then finally, are we modeling inclusive language? So, our next meeting is a meeting that just is with our cohort of six. So, we can talk about next steps and what our goals would like to be for the year, and that's on September 30th. That's just kind of my quick overview. I'm really excited about it. I think. I'm really excited about it, I think it's really gonna be some good work. Does anybody have any questions? I used to look at Mr. Mapes, Amy, but now I'm just looking straight at you, so...
Can you just repeat, I missed, like, when you were, what's, what's the, how did you start off? What is this called?
It's the Main Curricular Leaders Association offered an Equity-Centered Teaching Practices Cohort.
You didn't catch all that, Amy?
It is, yeah, sorry, that's why I got tongue-tied saying it, and I practiced all afternoon.
Any questions, comments, or anything for Beth? Good work, as always, keep it up.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too, thanks. Okay, so that finishes up the director's reports, and we had moved item O up in the agenda. So, we have staff nominations. Any comments on these, Mr. Nelson?
I moved it up because one of the staff nominations that I'm making tonight is for an administrative contract, and that will be for a new Director of Sanford Community Adult Education, and that's Jane Perkins. I asked Jane to come to tonight's meeting, so that she might have an opportunity to go in and introduce herself to the school committee, as well as the public at home, talk a little bit about your background and what you're looking forward to as the nomination for the Adult Education Director.
You're welcome, Jane.
Thank you, thank you very much. As Superintendent Nelson said, I am Jane Perkins, and I come to you with 30 years of educational experience. And I started out in elementary school, then I went to middle school, and then I went to high school. Most importantly, though, is I had an opportunity to teach for the SAD 60 Adult Education Program, and I taught social studies, and it was there that I fell in love with all things adult ed. And what I noticed is the students and their resiliency and their courage, and then the staff, how supportive they were and how dedicated. And I said, that's what I want, I want to be a part of this. So, I decided to return to school, and I got my master's degree in administrative leadership, and then went on to do the coursework for Adult Education Director. And I am just, I've never been happier in all my 30 years, and I'm excited, and I have that passion back. And my philosophy on adult ed is that I want to ensure that every adult learner gets access to a relevant, respectful, and safe learning environment, and I want to be able to guarantee every student that they have that. And so, I am before you tonight, hoping to be able to lead Sanford in that effort. I am working with the Operations Manager, Lisa Blanchett, on my entry plan, so that on day one, I can start and really hit the ground running and work hard and just represent all the pride that I've seen, experienced here and shared. It just does my heart wonders, and so, I thank you for this opportunity, and also for the privilege of your time, I know how busy everyone is. Well, thank you very much.
You sold me.
Seriously.
Any questions, comments, anybody?
First of all, I want to say thank you, Jane, for coming, welcome aboard. I've had the honor and privilege to attend many graduations and speak at several of them when I was the chair. And there were stories and memories that I, going to those graduations, that are just with me, and I'll never forget them. And one of them, or two of them, was a young man that lived off of Pioneer Ave, and he was probably 23 years old, and he walked to Springvale every single class, snowstorm raining, and he never missed a class. And then, there was another gentleman, that when he came up on the stage, he was a Vietnam, he was 17, dropped out of high school, went to Vietnam, and came back three years ago, I believe, and got his diploma. And those are just a couple of the stories, and there's many of them. And I really gotta say, I enjoyed going to those, and I still do, I missed the last one, obviously, but I enjoy going to the adult ed graduations, you see a lot of great smiles, and a lot of people that had a lot of different paths in their career, and sometimes they went the right ones, but they were there that night, so, welcome aboard.
Thank you, and you're invited to the next graduation.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Amy, did you have something?
I want to go too.
Sure, come on.
No, I'm excited that you're here and your enthusiasm, I just, I am excited to see where you take us.
Thank you, thank you, I'm very excited.
Anything to add, Paula? You all good?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thanks for taking the time to come out.
What's that?
Thanks for taking the time today.
Oh, thank you, thank you, I will work hard and represent Sanford well.
Excellent.
Thank you.
One question, though, do you have, I know you were from, you came from Noble, correct? So, do you have your Sanford Spartan gear yet?
I don't have anything yet.
No, you better pick that up this week.
I do, you're right.
Homecoming's coming up there.
That's true, thank you.
That's part of the entry plan. So, with that, thank you, Jane, I would like to nominate Jane as the Director, Sanford Community Adult Education, and you'll notice she'll be replacing Nicole Ivy, but we are also working this out to have Jane be a full-time Director for that, and working to have her transition from Noble and to be able to make all of that work. She's gonna be starting with us right after Indigenous People Holiday in October on the 12th, officially. I think before then, she's already been working with Lisa and being able to set up to work on that entry plan. So, we will need the school committee to take action tonight.
Okay, and I will, I'll make a motion to approve the nomination as presented. Do I have a second? Second from Mr. Rue? Any comments? Okay, all in favor? All in favor? Mr. Mapes, how do you vote? Did we lose him?
No, I approve that.
Okay, that's a yes from Mr. Mapes, thank you, sir. Okay, it's official, Jane. Okay, do you want to do the rest of the section, or are we just moving?
Yeah, but this section's more of an announcement, because the three here were hired back in August for that, to start with us at the beginning of September. Special ed teacher at the high school, John Hamilton. Also, as a English second language teacher, Nisha McGuckin. And then, as I had, I think, reported previously, we were able to secure a plumbing instructor for the new plumbing program at SRTC, and that's Williams On with that. So, those happened back in August, they've been with us along, just formally announcing that now at our first meeting in September.
Excellent, welcome aboard, especially our plumbing instructor. I know that's been a long, hard road, but very exciting. Just speaks to how important it is to have a plumbing program. Okay, back to our regular scheduled program. Jay, new business, I see none. Item K, old business, I see none. Resignations, Mr. Nelson?
Yep, couple resignations to announce. Sarah Gammon as a Special Ed Tech 2 at Sanford Pride, back at the end of August. And also, one that won't become effective till November 5th, but someone who's really been a really dedicated member, an important member, to the Sanford School Department. Louis Trot, as the Head Custodian at Sanford High School, has announced his resignation that will be effective November 5th, 2021. So, a big, big thank you to Louis Trot. I think, at the end of the day, whenever you get the yearbook dedicated to you, that I think will speak to someone's impact that he has on everyone that he comes in contact with for that. I don't think that's something you see pretty common for your head custodian, but I actually saw Louis today, had a chance to talk to him, and it's not easy for Louis, because Sanford High School and the Sanford School Department has been part of his life, an important part of his life, and he's been an important part of ours as well. So, kudos and a big thank you to Louis Trot.
I certainly hope he's going off to a nice retirement, is that the plan?
Yes.
Excellent, yeah, because he's been around, what, 40, 50 years, something like that?
I don't know the exact...
He's only been around longer, right?
Hey, Matt, both 40 years.
Yeah, it's been a long time, yeah. Louis is great, man, it's gonna be, I'm seeing him around.
Yeah, he will.
So, hey, best of luck and enjoy retirement. What was that, Amy?
I'm sure he'll keep coming visiting.
Yeah, you probably will have to make him leave, like, he'll be...
An honorary member, I think.
Oh, that's awesome. Okay, appointments, what do we have, Mr. Nelson?
Yep, we have four staff appointments. Andrew Kluk, Special Ed Tech 2 at Sanford Pride. Victoria Nash is a long-term substitute at Sanford Middle School. Anthony Nijen is Assistant Freshman Football Coach for Sanford High School. And Nicole Cordo as the Counseling Department Chair for the Sanford Middle School.
Excellent, welcome aboard.
And then, we have, usually in the first meeting in September, we do announce the majority of our Schedule C1 and Schedule D appointments, primarily for SRTC, Sanford High School, and and we'll have, and some also for the district, as well as, I think we'll have some coming up for Sanford Middle School, which will be at the next week's meeting, hopefully.
Excellent, and all those names are available in the agenda online. We are not gonna make Mr. Nelson read them tonight.
Well, there, I do want to point out that there are two errors on the next page, page four of your agenda. We have a number of teachers as part of the Civil Rights Club at the high school. Genevieve Truffallette is gonna be replacing Kim Watson. So, Kim Watson is out, Genevieve Truffallette is gonna be in that spot. And then, down at the district positions, the grade five, grade level leader, it's not Christie Parent, it's Christie Peters, who has been doing a very nice job for us as the grade five, grade level leader.
So, it's probably just an autofill error, right? As you started putting Christie in, P went to... Okay, great, well, hey, that's, it's nice to see that all these clubs and stuff are gonna actually be happening this year, or happening already, and it's exciting to have the kids back in there doing stuff, so...
And then, under staff transfers, originally, I had announced that Sean Rowe would be moving from a second shift custodian to a Special Ed Ed Tech position at the middle school, but Sean has decided to withdraw that transfer position, so he will be remaining as a custodian at Sanford High School.
Okay, we already did section O, policies and procedures, I see none. So, we have items for future agenda, should that actually be under the calendar announcements? I think that's in the wrong section, because we usually just announce those later under the calendars. Do we have any items anybody wants to bring up?
I would like to say happy birthday to Grace, who just left.
Oh, were we supposed to catch her before she left?
I was like, no!
Yeah, she actually, they, both her and Bella had to leave to go practice the senior dance for homecoming. But she, I guess her mom told her she didn't have to come on her birthday, and she still came. How's that for dedication?
Dedication, kudos, yes.
Okay, so, calendar announcements, we've got our next regular school committee meeting on the 20th, which is next week right away at 6:00 PM. Then, we have October 4th at 6:00 PM and October 18th at 6:00 PM.
And at next Monday's meeting, we'll have opening of school updates from Kathy Sargent for SRTC, Tracy Hallissey from Margaret Chase Smith School, Sherry Barron from Carl J. Lamb School, and Stacy Bissel from the Bridge School. As I mentioned earlier in the meeting, we're looking to have Brett Williams give an update for the Performing Arts Center at that October 4th meeting. And then, just a couple other reminders, the next Safety Committee meeting is also on that day, October 4th, earlier in the afternoon, 3:15 to 4:15. Tomorrow is the first Wellness Committee meeting from 3:15 to 4:15, that's gonna be held via Zoom. Prior to next Monday's School Committee meeting, the High School and SRTC Schedule Advisory Committee has also got our next meeting planned at 2:30 at the high school. And then, also, this Thursday, I wanted to announce that SRTC has their Fall Open House this Thursday from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM.
Okay, excellent, I was just double-checking to make sure I had the time right for that meeting on the 20th. Yeah, I do have 2:30, okay. Okay, then, we're on to adjournment. Would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn? Mr. Rue? Who wants to second it? Amy, Amy's gonna second, any discussion? We all good? All in favor? Mr. Mapes, are you in favor of adjourning? There's a nod. Okay, that's it, thanks, everybody, have a great night.